Let's call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. Seeing no one else recording the meeting, if you'd please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. As usual, we have a packed house. And I don't see any citizens to comment. So we will move right on to special recognitions and I'll turn it over to Dr. Hanfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, everyone. With the 20th anniversary of September 11th on Saturday. And just realizing the horrific tragedy that that was for this country and the scars that will exist forever. Coupled with the fact that we had many local folks involved in that tragedy. I thought maybe we could take a moment of silence in memory of those people lost. Thank you.
Are there any other special recognitions, Dr. Hanfield?
No, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Any comments? I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of eight twenty-five.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote. And we don't have any student representatives to report to us.
Uh, no, Mr. Chair, we do have Jasmine, um, and she's a senior this year. And we do have a junior, her name is Ally McGill. Uh, you will meet both of, well, you've already met Jasmine, but you will meet Ally um, at our September the 22nd meeting. I do apologize uh, with respect to some of the Zoom snafu that we have tonight. Uh, we had a new audio system uh, and visual system placed here over the summer. And so we're very grateful for that. But the ability to uh, broadcast via Zoom um, isn't quite there yet. And so we anticipate having that for the 22nd. Uh, and we will see Jasmine and you'll meet Ally at that time.
Excellent. Well, if you bump into Jasmine, tell her that we miss her.
I will, I did see her at the high school last week and she's doing well, very well. So um, no plumbing catastrophes or anything like that, so that's a good thing. Um, but she's really excited to be back and, and really um, pleased to be able to come back and share what's going on at AHS and around the world, so.
Well, the best part about the plumbing leak is that she has a way of putting a positive spin on.
Agreed.
Really.
You're just not gonna let her forget it, are you?
I'm not gonna let her forget it, but no, she's just such a happy kid. It's nice to have her here.
Yeah, one of the best, one of the best stories we've had.
All right, we now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, related to the Zoom snafu, um, usually at this year, uh, excuse me, usually at this time every year, we recognize um, our new professional teaching and counseling staff to the armed public schools. Uh, we moved that to the 22nd as well, um, along with the principals. And so you will meet all of the new staff um, that can make it. But within your packets, uh, you can see the listing. At Auburn High School, we welcome Margaret Duffy. At Auburn Middle School, we welcome Neil Jamian, Bethany Peterson, Andrew Shore, Taylor Laforce, and Gloria Ma Colón Azario. At Swanson Road, we welcome Jessica Savita, Kristen Cozio, Kelly Connerton, Keith Goodyear, Caitlin Thunberg, Caitlin Newicki, Arianna Savlek, Tracy Savatka, Alex Morrow, and Molly O'Connor. And between Pack of Chog and Bryn Ma, we welcome Jenna Bailey and Ariella Emmanuel. And they will say hello to you in digital uh, time on the 22nd. But we're thrilled to have them join the Auburn team.
Excellent, I look forward to meeting them all. And we now move on to unfinished business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so as we were talking um, throughout the last few weeks, uh, we're talking about ways to keep our students in school during COVID. And we talked at our last meeting about the um, CIC program, offering symptomatic testing and a test and stay uh, option. Dr. Chamberlain will uh, provide just a quick, quick update on that and um, let you know the number of people that we have interested in participating thus far.
Thank you, nice to see you all. I think you're probably all aware that yesterday around four thirty, the email went out providing a link for families to consent to participate in the symptomatic or the test and stay options. Um, as of this afternoon, we had a hundred and fifty-two adults of our, so that would be our staff members, uh, and six hundred and twenty-eight students who provided consent to participate, which I think is a great turnout for about twenty-four hours. So we look forward, I'll probably send the email out again tomorrow just to nudge people along. Um, I think the way it works is that once CIC sees how many people we have interested, that's how they determine the level of support we receive. So if there's a large number of folks who consent, that will dictate us getting more help to pro, to conduct the testing. So they're gonna give it a few days and see where we land and then we'll have more information about when the actual rollout will take place. We're anticipating the arrival of binax now tests any day. So that's the next step in that and then it's a matter of just deploying all of this. So a couple of questions that have come up. I have, uh, a number of folks ask, because when you sign the consent, you're content, you're consenting to symptomatic, to test and stay, and to the pool testing. And they did that for a reason. And it's because districts have the option to toggle in between those options. And they felt like getting consent for everything at the beginning was the best way to manage that. But what I assured the folks and the questions were, they, they, they don't want their child to be part of a pool testing, but they do want the symptomatic and the test and stay. I said, if we get to the point, and I have no way of knowing if we were ever to add pool testing, families would be notified of that fact, that there was going to be a change in the protocol. So I want to rest assured that right now we are looking only at symptomatic and test and stay. And if that were to change, we would certainly notify the community before that happens. So that there aren't any surprises with that. That was really the main question I received, uh, and I know Dr. Hanfield did a couple of the same. So um, you know, we hope people take advantage of it. I'm available, if anyone has questions about it, please refer them to me. I'm happy to answer what I can, but it's very exciting and honestly, for me, it can't get here soon enough so we can keep our kids in school. Did you have any questions?
I just have a question about, we got a come this week from you, Dr. Hanfield, about a few students that have been exposed to COVID. So what's happened to them right now, they're home and they have to stay there, or?
So, yes, so through the chair, um, that's correct. Um, as we discussed at um, our August twenty-fifth meeting, one of, excuse me, the eighteenth. One of the difficulties that the state has imposed upon us is that we don't have options for children respective to things like this. So unfortunately, when a child is out, COVID or otherwise, they're out and considered absent, if you will. And um, unfortunately, you know, have to resort back to pre-pandemic methods, if you will. We are working, Dr. Chamberlain and I, with the principals to make sure that any shape of our buildings, that we are touching base with our students on a daily basis, working within the bounds of DESI. Um, DESI came out again, right, with the statement just again the other day, reemphasizing the fact that, you know, remote instruction is not considered appropriate instruction or condoned instruction or allowed instruction um, for students. And so we're kind of handcuffed uh, in that respect, so. And um, you know, if someone asked me, you know, just, you know, how does the state know? Well, we have something called SIMs and EPIMs and attendance. That we have all these reports that Karen Berkowitz, our district data coordinator, has to submit to the state. They can track every child in the state, their attendance, what they're doing, the courses they're enrolled in, the grades they receive, like everything, they see it all. Um, and so they, you know, they, they will call you on it, they will call you on it, so.
If I could add to, each of the schools are working to provide some kind of, I could say, old-school hard copy work for kids. So that if it is a matter of a couple of days, at least they're getting some foundational practice of certain skills or provided with some reading that might support them in the coursework, whatever's appropriate for the level, um, and things that can be easily deployed so that there isn't a lag time with getting the materials to kids. The other thing we remember is that when students are homesick, they should take care of themselves, right? They shouldn't be um, doing their schoolwork, we'll work with them when they return. Um, but we, we do have an optional plan for that, so kids are getting some contact with school and some work to do.
Good.
Good to hear.
Thank you.
One other question, is the, the target rollout date for all of the testing still October first? Or do we just do it as soon as we feel like we've gotten a good viable number to move forward?
Yeah, so that's gonna depend a bit on CIC. So I, I think we're shooting for, as soon as we're ready, let's go. Um, and so now it's a matter of getting in as many of the consents as we can. That will determine what we get for support and then they'll roll that support out to us. Um, just making that initial connection was a little bit tricky. But once it was made, things seemed to start moving a little bit, so that was a really good sign. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, through our, um, or as we said at our, our last meeting on the twenty-fifth of August, um, special, special town meeting for the fall is October the twenty-sixth. Then we have three Warren articles before you, Mrs. Wiswicky will present them. And then after questions and discussion, we'll look for motion for yourselves.
Hi, everyone, good to see all of you. Uh, the first article is a request to reduce the requested amount of a hundred and fifty thousand that was approved at town meeting in May and lower it to a hundred thousand. Uh, with the recent changes in claiming and calculating the Medicaid reimbursements over the past year of the COVID pandemic, we've seen a decrease in our revenue or reduction, the revenue received from the original, from the, what we had originally anticipated. So we're looking to reduce it from one fifty to a hundred thousand, which is more realistic at this time. But the revenues for services, these revenues are from services previously rendered. And looking ahead, if I do see the potential that we could increase the revenues or the revenues will be increased in some aspect, then I will look to come back at the May, at the annual town meeting in May and request for an increased amount. But um, these are monies that come in and, you know, it's, it would be unfair for us to ask for monies that we're not receiving, so I felt that it was best to reduce it to a hundred thousand. So that's that one. Um, then, are you, through the chair, um, are you gonna take these separately or vote them all together as one, as I'll go through each one?
I think the way it's written is um, all together.
Okay. All right. The next article is to request additional amounts uh, received for the homeless transportation. This reimbursement is also for services previously rendered, which pertain to transportation. Uh, the district usually receives a reimbursement rate of approximately thirty percent. And that's the amount that I had anticipated at the annual town meeting for the five thousand dollars that was requested. However, we were pleasantly surprised, we received a lot more money, um, in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty. So at this time, I'm looking to just go back to town meeting and request the additional eight thousand seven hundred and fifty to be used for homeless transportation in the coming years. So that's article number two. And the third article, um, this requires a little bit of an explanation, so it's a lot. I was trying to think about how to present this. But um, school districts um, across Massachusetts have received, have been approved to receive federal funding from S R three and ARPA to address needs in light of COVID, whether it be learning deficits. Um, and they've also uh, mentioned that you could be used for um, addressing deficits in HVAC and air quality within school buildings, which has been a big issue. So um, with that specific case in mind, um, the school department would like to address the HVAC air quality needs of the district utilizing three hundred and five thousand from the grant funds, which would be the same amount of money that was approved at May town meeting as part of CIP. In FY twenty-two, we had put aside an amount for all the schools together, it added to be three hundred and five thousand. So we were looking to, since doing, um, the project we'd like to do, address at this time is um, we'd like to repurpose the capital money to use it for parking lot expansion. Um, we've had, um, in light of COVID, it became more prominent, but we, we've always had some issues on Swanson Road, um, with traffic flow and concern for safety and parking. Um, so what we're looking to do is take the field, well, the field that's near the ball field on the other side of Bryn Ma School and repurpose that for a parking lot space that would be accessible all throughout, like all kinds of weather conditions. Right now, it's, it's dirt and some gravel, so it's gonna make it a little messy during the winter seasons or when it's raining and there's a lot of rain. Um, so we were looking to do it, um, an upgrade to the parking expansion. We already had money previously set aside last year, the amount of two hundred and thirty thousand for parking renovations to be done at Bryn Ma School. So we wanted to take this three hundred and five thousand that we had set aside as CIP and repurpose it to the parking lot expansion project and take the three oh five that we originally had for CIP and put that into the grant. So I hope I explained that so you understand. But um, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
I think it makes sense and I think it's a smart way to repurpose funds, so.
So yeah, so through the chair, um, yeah, so just to clarify, and that's essentially what this is. So I'll talk a little bit later about S R three and the ARPA funds that the municipalities are getting. One of the targeted areas is for HVAC and building upgrades, as Mrs. Wiswicky said. And so if we can accelerate the HVAC and then take the monies that were in the capital and repurpose those for the parking and the uh, street work and the engineering and things like that at Bryn Ma and, you know, Swanson Road area, I think we'll be able to hopefully get both projects done faster um, by using, you know, a portion of, of the S R three funds. So I, I, you know, I, we think it makes sense, um, you know, the conversation with, with the town, they feel it makes sense as well. Um, so we're happy to be able to potentially get two very important things done, you know, quicker with this money.
And it's a large project too, so to be able to have such a single lump sum.
Right.
I think that's why it's teasing.
And yeah, I mean, and the other part of it too, through the chair, is that it solves a need, because you know, prior to the, prior to this funding coming out, we were talking to the town about how do we, how do we mitigate the traffic issues, you know, over on Swanson. Um, it's been a long, longstanding issue. I mean, none of our buildings, let's be frank, none of our buildings have great traffic patterns and there's nothing that, you know, really you can do about it, that's just how they were, it's just how it was, you know, um, and how it's gonna be unfortunately. But Swanson and, and Bryn Ma, ever since Swanson became an intermediate school and it bumped up against Bryn Ma, the traffic really became a nightmare. And then obviously, we know last year what that turned into with COVID, so. So we're, we're excited to be able to bring this forward to the town and, um, you know, save what we think, we'll also be saving the town money on, on the backside with the parking lot expansion project, because it'll be money they won't have to pay.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, do you anticipate that project, the expansion of the parking lot being done by winter? Or is this like a spring?
We, we'll, we have to basically, um, we're working on getting an engineering study done right now and then we would basically have to put it out to bid and so it would be a time, it would be a time frame. It might not be till next summer.
Through the chair, it's a great question. And the other part of that is where it's located, there's gonna be a number of permits that will be needed. Um, you know, environmental, you know, maybe a boarding zone, you know, uh, situation, so. Um, you know, it's, it's something that is probably, you know, I'm gonna guesstimate that, you know, at the earliest, maybe we're looking at the summertime of next, summertime of next year, twenty-two. I, you know, I think it'll be the earliest. Um, you know, we need to get the funding approved first, but.
That's the key piece is that we have, in order for us to put it out to bid, we have to guarantee that we have the funds to support that. And so that's why we're trying to get everything lined up so that we're ready to go.
Well, it'd be hard to close that area down and leave and everything with ready to come making a job now, so.
It would take a long time, so. Right.
Right, yes.
Any other questions?
Seeing none, thank you. I would stand a motion to approve, to recommend.
I'll make a motion to approve the Warren articles as presented.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote. And we now move on to new business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, as we all know, we returned to school, um, Wednesday, September the first. And by all accounts, I think, um, all of us, Dr. Chamberlain, myself, Mrs. Wiswicky, um, this is Williams behind me and the office staff here, um, would agree that it was, um, and continues to be, a bit of, a bit of a chaotic situation, but good chaos. Um, this is always the way it is at the time of school years, you're getting school buses squared away and things like that. But, um, you know, as we were through the buildings, um, so many smiling faces, uh, teachers excited to be back, kids excited to be back. Uh, I think we really had flawless openings, you know, the usual bus stop, you know, a traffic type of, you know, hiccups here and there that we always, I, you know, have to iron out every year, but um, overall, very, very pleased with how it went. And um, would just like to say thank you to, you know, everyone from the central office staff to the administration, to our teachers, um, our families for being incredible. Um, you know, we're going on eighteen months and, um, you know, it was, yeah, it real, didn't it? It really felt like a normal school year, I mean, it's S and D's. Um, but it really felt walking through the buildings like, like a normal year. Um, so we're excited about that and, you know, we picked up kind of where we left off. Almost felt like time had stopped and then started again. With a few changes.
All right, moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so it's just previously discussed, um, or mentioned, I should say, uh, by Mrs. Wiswicky, the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, um, enacted on March eleventh, twenty twenty-one. This is the third um, round of uh, funding to come to school districts relative to helping dig out of COVID. Part of it, as we talked about, is, um, you know, earmarked or can be, I should say, we're choosing in our district, um, to upgrade our, our buildings and our HVAC uh, quality. But the other part of that money is for academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs. Um, it's a three-year grant that has to be expended by June of twenty twenty-four. So we're looking at about four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars per year. We're kind of breaking it down in a three-year fashion. Um, and we'll be utilizing that, like we talked about here, with some HVAC. Um, we're hoping to be able to continue to use it um, for the academic, the social, and the emotional pieces um, in our program. Uh, if you recall, we used, we received about six hundred and fifteen thousand in S R two uh, funds and that has funded, um, we have stood up social and emotional um, programs in all of our school buildings. And so we're hoping to be able to continue that with this, this money. Um, again, do the HVAC pieces. But the reason why I bring it up also is that unlike the other two pieces, S R three um, requires that survey go out to the school community, asking for their input um, in terms of how they would like to see the money spent. Twenty percent of this at a minimum, which is two eighty-two, one fifty-eight, uh, needs to be put aside to address learning loss. Um, I think we're gonna probably exceed that number here in the district. But, um, you know, as you can see here, there's a, a long checklist of things that is in gate, you know, that people could, you know, select, um, I believe it's, take your top three. Right, take your top three. Yeah, so people will be asked to, to select your top three. Um, and I think, you know, based on, and this is just anecdotal, but I'm thinking based on, you know, the survey data I had from my, my entry report, people are gonna line right up probably with the academic piece, the social, emotional piece, um, and so on and so forth. So, um, we will be sending this out to families, um, to get their feedback and we'll be happy to report back what the, those numbers look like.
Sounds great. Seeing no questions?
The other part of that too, Mr. Chair, if I may, um, I just wanna emphasize again, people have to understand that this is, it, it's nice that we have this money, but I don't want anybody to be, to be misled to think that this is permanent money or that this is money that can just be put into, you know, our budget and it's going to, you know, fill gaps and cracks and holes. Um, this is what I call soft money, it's here and gone in, in three years. And so we're using this money, you know, to handle some issues with our buildings, you know, handle some issues with our students, uh, and our families. Um, and, you know, that's that. So this is kind of a, you know, a side, a side piece. So I, I don't want people to be confused about that when we start talking about budget. It's, and I, and I get it, it's very easy to confuse. There's so many, there's so much money that's gone out since the COVID, you know, started. Um, it's very easy to kind of confuse, but I just wanna reemphasize that this is what I'm calling kind of soft money outside the operating budget requests. Um, it really have very particular uh, things that we can spend this money on and it's really detailed in this survey. So if it's not kind of in that survey, that's, that's really the limit of how that money can be spent. So I just wanted to underscore that, because I think that's really important. Um, you know, and I think, and I've mentioned it several times, over the last two fiscal years, you know, we've lost almost eight hundred thousand dollars, you know, to our, our foundation budget, the four sixty-two because of the school, uh, Student Opportunities Act that wasn't funded. And then, um, you know, the eight hundred thousand, you know, last year that we didn't see in chapter seventy. So, um, as we move into October, uh, just to foreshadow a little bit, you know, we'll have enrollment numbers and, you know, we'll get kind of a ballpark sense of where we think maybe. Um, but I just wanted to put that out there on record just to make sure that people have that clear, or as clear as I can make it.
Great.
Good to hear, I think that makes sense and if there's anything that we can use that kind of serves a dual purpose to build a foundation for something that we can use beyond three years and the type of programs that we've been working and studying, I'm sure that that's what you guys are thinking around too.
Yeah, so through, that's a great point. So through the chair, um, that's really what we're trying to do with our bright programs in each of our buildings, is, you know, we've cut this funding for three years. Um, you know, with, there's, there's a lot of variables in place here as, you know, as budget goes, budget's very volatile every year. Um, but, you know, we're, we're looking at potential retirement bill, you know, in, in, in Boston coming out, um, for districts to elect into, we're looking at retirements, just general retirements, you know, nothing special with standing. And we're hopeful to be able to kind of fold some of that money, you know, into supporting some of these programs that we've built with this foundation money. So, um, that's exactly what we've, we're trying to do with this.
All right. Seeing no questions, moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so as we talked about at the end of last school year, um, actually, we were talking about it several times during the school year, but, um, as we're starting to get into this school year, um, we're starting our work with the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity, or CLEE, um, as the acronym goes. And, um, what we're doing now is we're starting to gather information, um, as I explained, I think, last year, but I'll have you explain it again. We're looking at qualitative and quantitative data. So the quantitative data, the stuff that you can kind of see, you know, and count. Um, and then we're looking at the qualitative data for impressions of folks. I thought this graphic organizer that I placed in, in your packets this week, I, I thought nicely articulated what it is we're trying to accomplish. Um, because I don't want any misunderstandings in the community. And so it's student achievement equity equals educator capacity equity um, plus systematic and programmatic equity. So what does that mean? Well, there's three different domains here. Student achievement equity, to what extent are all, and let me bold, all students achieving high and equitable outcomes needed to prepare them for life, college, and career? To what extent are all students meeting projected growth each year? So those are the two main questions we're looking around, student achievement equity. But we have to also look at educator capacity equity, because the teachers are the ones that are teaching our students, right? So to what extent the educators have the knowledge, skills, and dispositions to unleash the unlimited potential of differently abled learners? To what extent do our educators have the knowledge, skills, and dispositions to unleash the unlimited potential of students from a range of cultural, racial, language, socioeconomic, and gender identity backgrounds? To what extent is professional learning high quality and aligned to the district's gaps, needs, and aim at increasing equity? To what extent is professional development aligned to adult learning theory? And then at the last domain, systematic and programmatic equity. So to what extent are high-quality instructional materials equitably distributed to our student body? To what extent are course program and placements equitable? To what extent are there policies that support equitable outcomes for all students? And to what extent are learning conditions safe and designed to support learning? That's what we're trying to do here in this equity audit. And quite frankly, it's gotta be something that's done, you know, um, it, it, it can't be my take on it. I, this has, I've been in the system too long, I've been here for seventeen years. This is something, Dr. Chamberlain's been here for ten years. You know, we need an outside organization to help us look at our data and put together, you know, information, focus group information, things of that nature, and come back to us with where do we think we are with these questions? Okay, where do we think we are with these questions? And it's very clearly articulated, we're looking at every single student in our school system. in our school system from STEM to Stern. So that, uh, so that is, that work is starting and, um, we will continue, or Dr. Chamberlain probably will take more of the lead on it, but, um, certainly we'll continue to update even the community as we move in this direction. Um, it's not something that's, that's, it's not an overnight, you know, issue here. Um, we have, you know, this is a multi-year project. And, um, just wanted to, to put that out there and, and just be very particular about what it is we're trying to do.
Any comments, questions?
That was a very concise summary. Thank you for bringing this up.
Right.
Related, Mr. Chair, um, as we, as we talked a lot last year, um, at the end of the school year, there was a lot of discussion about critical race theory and you heard critical race theory talked about in the media, the social media, you know, wherever. And the work that we're trying to do here with our equity, um, for all of our students, some people unfortunately will confuse that with critical race theory. This document that you have in your possession dated August ninth was penned by, um, the gentleman who, Tom Scott, who is the head of the Massas- Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. This is our statement as superintendents that critical race theory is not taught in any of our schools in Massachusetts. It's an analytical framework and process that goes back into the nineteen seventies. It's, you know, got legal ramifications, it's got, uh, institutional ramifications. We teach what we're supposed to be teaching, part of the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. And so I just wanna make that point very strongly that this letter is available in the school community packet, people are free to read it. And, um, you know, I, I do not want there to be any misunderstanding. Uh, there is no critical race theory that is in the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. We are not supporting critical race theory in the Auburn public schools. We're supporting an honest, transparent teaching of history, the good and the bad, as it's laid out in our frameworks. So I felt it was important that I, I follow the equity statement with that as well because that continues to be something that I get every once in a while from somebody. And I, I, I just need to be emphatic about that.
Any comments, questions?
I'm glad you answered that because some people started asking me that, different places and stores. So I'm gonna do that. No, that's for like the kids in college. It's not elementary, middle, high school.
Yeah, it's a, yeah.
It's not for us.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very, uh, it's a very mature, um, theoretical concept that I think does have a place for discussion, but I do not believe it has a place for discussion, you know, within the Auburn public schools. Um, so that's, that's our, our stance on it. And, um, like I said, I, we've had, we've fielded a number of phone calls from people, citizens, random folks. Um, and, you know, I, I don't know how more emphatically to say it other than to say this is, this is where we stand on it. And that's that. And again, it's not to say that critical race theory may not have, you know, a, a place, you know, in the discussion, you know, but, but the discussion is, is not one that, um, you know, that we're, we're entertaining here, so.
Through the chair, I just, I think it's important that all kids feel, um, comfortable coming into our schools regardless of their background or anything. So, um, anything we can do to support that is great.
And I think that's really, and through the chair, and thank you for saying that, Mrs. McRillis, I think, Dr. McRillis, I think that's really, that, that's the point here, right? We're trying to make this an equitable situation for every kid. And as I said it last year, I'll say it again, I'll probably say it ten times, I'll probably show the clip. When Aaron Zhang stood at graduation and stated, "Thank you to the Auburn community for giving me everything I needed to be successful." I want every kid to be able to say that. I mean, every child deserves it. Whether they access it or not, that's another story. But we need to be making sure that that's happening to the best of our ability in our schools, period. That's what this is about. And you can tell I feel passionately about that.
Well, also. Um, as we all do, as we all, this, this, uh, this, this conversation has come up many times and, and you're right, sometimes, um, as we, we seek, um, equity in our schools, not to say that, that they haven't been equitable, but as, as we seek to improve upon that and as, as Dr. McRillis said, to make sure that every single student, and as you've just, uh, piggybacked on, every single student feels welcome, feels comfortable coming in, has the best possible opportunity to learn. That's all we're trying to do here. And if that conversation touches on some uncomfortable areas for some people, then maybe they, they need to get over that. They need to get over themselves, get on board with us because really, all we've ever tried to do is what's best for each and every one of our students. That's, that's always been the bottom line. And I would just throw on top of that to some of the, you know, the, the naysayers. There's no other reason that we're here. There's no other reason. There's no, there's no popularity contest. There's no prize at the end. There's no grand retirement that we're getting from this. There's only one, there's only one reason why we take so much crap from so many people. And don't get me wrong, we get, we get a lot of support as well. There's only one reason we continue to do it. Because we care about every single kid and we want them to be the best that they can be.
The crap has been abundant, Mr. Chair. Just, just wanna.
Sorry, I had a conversation with some people in town today and it just got me, um, reinvigorated.
Yeah, no, that's good. I appreciate that, Mr. Chair, but I just wanted to confirm the crap has been abundant.
Any other comments or questions?
Those with the, for, for us with the field.
Yep.
We appreciate all of that. Just know that we see and we hear, we hear snippets of it, but I can only imagine how much, we'll just call it feedback, you guys are getting it.
That's all right.
Thank you.
All right, moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, uh, the last piece that I have tonight is, um, I, I stumbled across this actually by accident. I was, I was looking up something, um, relative to open meeting laws as related to potential subcommittees. And I stumbled across, um, and this, I, I didn't know about this. Um, at one point in time, and Mr. Tallaway, we touched upon, upon this in a private conversation. But, um, at one point in time, uh, there were several areas in the state that were required to police open meeting law. In January of twenty eighteen, all of that, uh, enforcement got consolidated to the Office of the Attorney General. Um, and so before you this evening is the most current, um, open meeting law guide in educational materials. It requires, um, an initial, um, sign-off to anybody who's new, uh, to a committee. It also requires, um, an additional re-sign-off anytime you are, um, elect, re-elected to a committee. And so, um, I just thought for baseline purposes that I would bring it before you this evening. And you can review it in the next two weeks. And then the sign-off page that's there, we can collect at the next meeting and put it on file. Uh, you know, it's pretty, it's, as I read through it, it's fairly standard. I mean, there's nothing, you know, there's some changes as we talked about relative to the, the verbiage for, you know, going into executive session, the ten specific reasons. Um, but you, when you read through it, it, it will look fairly, you know, similar to, to what we've always been.
Any comments, questions?
Is this different than the certificate we had to do through the town? So is this, because that was like a whole test thing we had to do and watch the videos and.
Yeah, so that would've been, so that would've been civil rights, excuse me, that's civil rights.
Rights.
Ethics, excuse me, what have been ethics?
Oh, ethics.
I'm getting the one that the teachers do that's one hundred and seventy pages long. Um, yeah, is it the ethics piece?
So no taking bribes to, when we take.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
No free pencils.
That's another reason we do this.
Who gives over fifty dollars?
No one's approached me with a gift under fifty dollars. Buy me a beer or something.
Well, I got a free pencil once.
Now we got the widgets, where did this twirly?
Oh, that's right, that's right, the widgets from last year.
Oh, that's right, I didn't get those. Those are cool.
I never got.
Those were thirty-two cents. You don't have to claim them.
All right. Any further discussion regarding the open meeting law packet?
So bring the page back next week, next.
Yes, is there, on the, on the last page of, I think, what was sent to you and I.
Page forty-eight.
Yeah, it's on the very, very last page. Um, that'd be great. And then we'll just have that on file and
right.
Make sure we update it as needed. Thank you.
All right, now the moment we're all waiting for. Don't everyone rush the podium? Business and financial.
Good evening again. So tonight I'd like to provide you with a busing update. Um, as Dr. Handfield expressed, we're off to a busy start. We've had one thousand five hundred and fifty-eight students register for busing. We're currently running our eleven buses. We do three tiers, one for the high school, one for the middle school, and one for the elementary. Um, we've been monitoring this past week. The first week, we kind of just, we're trying to let things roll. But this week, we've been closely monitoring arrivals and dismissals at each of the schools. And we've also been doing, working with the bus company to take headcounts on the buses to ensure that we have, um, appropriate ridership. Um, we'll then take the data that we received this week and put it together and review and, um, see if any changes need to be made. But things I feel like seem to be running smoothly. We've had some, a few, a few phone calls here and there, but I really feel for all this year, it's been good. I mean, I was surprised coming back from COVID, thinking that things would be a little bit more hectic, but, um, I feel like Mrs. Williams has been handling things very well here and, um, things have been going very smoothly. So we've been very happy. Um, we currently have an active waiting list for families who didn't previously register for busing. So we have some on file here and we'll be working on trying to get these students onto buses. But it's important that we look to make sure that the spacing is allowed. Um, currently, you know, we're running at full capacity with the buses. Um, students are all expected to wear masks on the bus. Um, we have hand sanitizer on the buses for students to use getting on and off. And we're also doing the cleaning protocols with the, the vendor as well to keep things going. So, but, and also the other thing we're doing is keeping the windows like two inches, um, open, all the windows and the hatches so that there's airflow. So we're trying to make sure it's a safe environment for all, but we've been very pleasantly surprised by the ridership. It's definitely up, but I feel like traffic has been a little bit better because of that as well. So, one last plug, we are in need of crossing guards. Um, if anyone does know of anybody who'd be interested in spending, you know, an hour, well, it's less than an hour, but like half an hour to forty-five minutes in the morning or in the afternoon, we are in need of crossing guards specifically at Swanson Road. So if you know of any parents or anybody that's interested. But, um, so that's it for busing. Any questions or?
Questions, comments? Dr. McRillis, you already gave your report earlier.
Yes.
Bussing.
Yes, my, um, my kid's bus driver is lovely though. She is very good with my kids.
And I, I do have to say, um, through the chair, that we've been very fortunate. Um, we contract with AA Transportation and we have not, not gonna put, been seeing the driver shortage, um, affect us. We, we have drivers for all of our routes. And we've been very happy about that. Um, I believe we have one new bus driver this year, so our bus drivers seem to keep coming back and we're very fortunate. They have good relationships with our teaching staff and um, students are really happy with a lot of the drivers that they recognize yearly here, so it's great. So.
Yeah, some of them are like celebrities. Missing out. I'm so excited.
It's true. And just as an aside, I, I, I wanna commend the students too who are all waiting for the school buses because as I drive down, you know, the end of my street, um, I see about, there's probably thirteen or fourteen of them. And, um, distance, masks are on. As I drive up the hill and down Packer Chog, I see that too. So I wanna commend the kids, you know, for, for, you know, following. Um, it'd be easy to slip the mask down, put it in your pocket, whatever, but, um, it's sort of a lot of, a lot of, uh, a lot of kids doing their, you know, doing the right thing. So I, I appreciate that and, um, just wanna put that out there. It doesn't go unnoticed.
Yeah, the kids don't seem to mind the masks there as much.
No, they don't.
They're adults. I think the adults mind it more, probably.
Yeah.
So no, um, questions? I'll respond to my next revolving account update. I provided you a list of all revolving accounts and their current balances that I, um, like to have your acceptance as is required for each fiscal year to approve for FY twenty-two.
Do I have a second?
I'll make a motion, uh, to the listing of all revolving accounts and their current balances have been provided for, um, whoops. Yeah, provided for our review and acceptance as is required each fiscal year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's a vote.
Thank you very much. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you.
Did you need a revolving account? I think we needed two motions.
Oh, there is another. Oh, I wrote, did I read the one that?
Yeah, you read the update.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
Yeah, why don't we redo that?
All right. Make a motion to accept the list of school department revolving accounts as presented for fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Much better.
I apologize.
Is that Dr. Handfield?
Word, it's.
That is all, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, do I have a second motion to adjourn?
Make that motion?
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's a vote. Good night, everyone.